Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Where's this on the agenda?
That was one of the grants.
You ready?
Towards the end.
Ready, good?
Yeah, I see it.
Let's go.
Yep.
Good evening. This is the Village Council Public Workshop. The date is May twenty, twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. Time is seven thirty-four P.M. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting on the bulletin board in Village Hall, by mail to the Ridgewood News, the Record, and by submission to all persons entitled the same as provided by law of a schedule, including the date and time of this meeting roll call.
Councilmember Mortimer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Perrin.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Winna Grad.
Here.
And May Valdinos.
Here. Will you all please join us in a salute to our flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go right to public comment.
Green light.
Green light on the bottom. Little button.
There we go. I was expecting a line here. Anyways, my name's Jim Bossler. I'm the chairman of the Open Space Committee.
Just have to state that you're a Ridgewood resident or not.
Yes, and I live in Ridgewood at eight twenty-one Newcombe Road.
You don't need to state your address going forward. We've changed that tradition, just that you're a Ridgewood resident. So, thank you, Jim. Go ahead.
Okay. Anyways, I'll be very brief. I just want to thank the Village Council for putting the open space referendum funding measure on the ballot or on the agenda tonight, and I look forward to hear the exchanges. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim, and thanks for your service on the Open Space Committee. It means a lot to us. Anyone else?
Good evening. Boyd A. Loving, Ridgewood resident. First of all, I'd like to thank the Signal Department. I noticed on my way here this evening that they have made some upgrades to the pedestrian crossing lights at North Irving Street and East Ridgewood Avenue. And now those people who were in the sidewalk getting ready to cross will see if the lights are activated. So, thank them very much for making that change. I'd also like to point out, and I'd like to acknowledge that another resident caught this and sent me a text about it, is that I'd noticed on the village calendar that Juneteenth is scheduled for June nineteenth. It is a national holiday. I believe I talked about this a little bit last year, that the ordinance needed to be updated to ensure that people didn't have to pay for parking on that day since it was a national holiday, and also that the noise ordinance for power tools was going to be enforced on that day because it was a national holiday. I believe Mr. Rogers made some changes, and that was voted on in September. However, I noticed on the calendar to this year that although Village Hall is closed, there is a meeting scheduled for Village Hall on that day. The Citizens Safety Advisory Committee, at least it's noted in the webpage, that the Citizens Safety Advisory Committee is scheduled to meet that day. Not sure about meeting on a national holiday, particularly that national holiday. Also, I see that there is a concert scheduled for the Cash House Shell. Obviously, on the Fourth of July, there is a lot of stuff going on in terms of concerts and things like that, but all of those are holiday-related. I'm wondering if the concert that is scheduled for that evening is going to be related to Juneteenth, or that is something that could be moved to another date if possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Boyd. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'm going to close public comment, and we'll move to our manager's report.
Mayor, just quickly.
Excuse me?
On the CSAC meeting?
I beg your pardon.
Yeah, no, he can go.
I do that all the time, and forgive me. I don't open up the dais to responses to comments. My fault.
So, Councilmember Mortimer can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the chair of the CSAC committee is actively looking to reschedule that for a different date when Village Hall is open. So, that's with regard to the CSAC committee. I don't have any information on the Cash House Shell. I know traditionally concerts are held regardless of whether Village Hall is open or closed for the holiday, so Evan, I don't know if you want to take that back.
Yeah, I'll take that away. I actually did appreciate that we had something on June nineteenth. I want to talk about it with the Shell Committee. I think Keith is right. We traditionally do it on the same day, so I'm going to run it by them and see what their thinking is, but it's a good catch, Boyd.
Anybody else? And with that, now we'll go to the manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, we had a very active Memorial Day here in the village. Very successful Ridgewood run this year. There's actually a new vendor who was involved, and they worked with all of our village departments to successfully conduct the run, so I want to congratulate the committee that put that together. I also want to thank American Legion Post fifty-three for their annual Memorial Day service, which was held at eleven A.M. at Van Ness Square. Very well attended on a beautiful day, and a lot of positive feedback about the tradition of continuing that service each year. We have been actively in discussions with Beth McManus, our affordable housing planner. We do have some deadlines that are coming up at the end of June where we need to submit our fourth round Affordable Housing Plan. We've actually been meeting with the mayor and the deputy mayor representing the Village Council, along with our professional staff on a weekly basis to get us to where we need to be next month, so we'll have more information at our work session in June about the submission of that plan. It'll also be discussed at a future planning board meeting. Pleased to report that the West Glen Sidewalk Project is moving forward. We now have consent from all of the affected property owners on the south side of West Glen Avenue. They've all agreed to sign the necessary easements and right-of-access agreements, so our engineering department and our village attorney, Matt Rogers, is working through that process with each of those residents, and that would put us in line to be able to install those sidewalks during the summer months when school is closed. With regard to the Kings Bridge Pedestrian Bridge, we anticipate that that is going to be reinstalled sometime over the summer. Unfortunately, some of the existing infrastructure at the bridge location needs to be upgraded in order for it to be successfully reinstalled. So, we don't have an exact date on that as of yet. Once that becomes more clear, we'll certainly share that with the public, but we anticipate sometime this summer for the reinstallation of the bridge. Tomorrow night, we'll be hosting a resident meeting with the residents of Beverly and Hermance, two streets over near Ridgewood High School. We are proposing some roadway improvements over the summer to that area. There'll be representatives from the Village Council and from the Board of Education and the school district there tomorrow night, in addition to our public safety folks, Chief Lyons, Chief Judge, and our village engineering department, to discuss the impacts of those road improvements with the residents. If you're there at dismissal time, you're going to see a lot of K-turns, some not so legal. We're also going to be discussing the ability to get fire apparatus closer to that area, so we'll be having that discussion tomorrow evening with those fifteen or so property owners in that area. And finally, I just want to announce that the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is federal money that's allocated through Bergen County, has awarded Ridgewood seventy-five thousand five hundred and ten dollars to do sewage pipelining in the South Broad Street area. This is the first time in maybe forever, but certainly a long time, that Ridgewood has become eligible, a certain designated neighborhood has become eligible for Community Development Block Grant money. So, we took advantage of that grant program this year, and each year, we're going to be doing a certain portion of lining those sewer pipes in that neighborhood as we progress. Just a few announcements tonight. Graydon Pool is opening this Saturday, May thirty-first. It will be open each day from eleven A.M. to seven P.M. through Labor Day. The Ridgewood Parks and Recreation and Open Space Committees present the May Park Walk at Habernacle Park on Saturday, May thirty-first, at ten A.M. Our deputy mayor is going to lead that park walk, so we encourage everybody to participate and learn more about Habernacle Park. As a reminder, the two-day-per-week irrigation is in effect. Odd-numbered addresses for irrigation are Tuesday and Saturday, and even-numbered addresses for irrigation are Wednesday and Sunday. No irrigation is allowed on Monday, Thursday, or Fridays. The Ridgewood Guild will be sponsoring Music in the Night for the fourteenth season, and will provide music in various locations on Friday nights downtown, starting on May thirtieth through Labor Day. Celebrate Ridgewood Pride Day at Memorial Park at Van Ness Square on Saturday, June seventh. The market will take place from eleven A.M. to six P.M. with a flag-raising ceremony at one P.M. We encourage everybody to come out, hear the speakers, and listen to the performers. The primary election will be held on Tuesday, June tenth. All polls will be open that day from six A.M. till eight P.M. The Holly Festival will be held on Saturday, June eighth, at the parking lot of McMurphy's from twelve noon to four P.M. There will be snacks and colors. Bands include Styx, the Stilettos, and Stones, and Acoustic Dudes. The Ridgewood Guild is sponsoring free movies in the park on Wednesday nights at nine P.M. in Van Ness Square on June eleventh, June twenty-fifth, July ninth, July twenty-third, August sixth, and August twentieth. Village Hall offices will be closed in observance of Juneteenth on Thursday, June nineteenth. The recycling center will also be closed, and there'll be no curbside bulk refuse pickup that week. And finally, the Village Council upcoming meetings. June fourth is a work session. June eleventh is a public meeting. June twenty-fifth is a work session. All began at seven thirty P.M. And that concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you, Keith. We'll go to council reports. Frank, want to kick it off?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. First, I'd like to give a shout-out to Dave at our Signal Department, who made the absolutely wonderful B-City signs, which now we have four of them up around town. We, Ridgewood has been a B-city since twenty seventeen, which the signs clearly state, and we were like the fifty-first or fifty-second city in the United States and the first B-city here in New Jersey, so I'm thrilled to do that, and Dave did a wonderful job on those signs. Citizen Safety meeting met on May fifteenth, and we did discuss having to change the date, which will be done. Additionally, at East Glen and Northern Parkway, there was discussion, and Signal Division will be installing the pedestrian illuminated crossing signs at East Glen and Northern Parkway, and then also a little closer to Maple at the P.S.N.G. Right-Away, there'll be a radar speed sign showing your speed is going to be installed as well, and I'm very grateful, as is all of the CSAC meeting. The site triangle updates, that these have been an issue for a while, and five more additional properties have come into compliance, and four new summonses were issued. And they started issuing summonses in twenty twenty-four, forty-one in total, of which thirty have now been addressed and are in compliance, which I think is a fantastic way to make that safer for everything. There are, it's called Oak, but East Glen and Maple, to make the left-hand turn by having a leading left-hand signal. We're still waiting for the county to approve that, but once we do that, we're hoping that it'll alleviate a lot of traffic, especially around the commuting times, and I know both Evan and I will be happy when that's taken care of. And as Keith mentioned, that we discussed the construction plan for Beverly Road going on there. PRC Board met last night. If you recall, from last month, we talked about the need for pickleball courts at Glen going from four to six courts. Nancy Bigos did work with engineering, and it is possible, so now the next step is just to work with our vendor to make it happen. And again, the timing's great because we're planning on resurfacing those anyway. The Habernacle Pavilion was supposed to have a grand opening on Saturday, however, because of this rain we've been having, the grand opening is delayed, and it'll happen in the next three or four weeks. Phase two of the lights at Vet Field were delivered on May fifteenth, so that's moving along, and we'll be talking a little bit tonight about the New York-New Jersey Trails proposal, and we talked about that as well as PRC Board. And finally, just celebrating that the fields at Hawes were reopened at the end of April, and that so far, it's been a huge success. And Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Frank. Very excited about all of that stuff. Sounds like good, by the way, congratulations on the B-City thing.
Thank you.
I know, look, it means a lot to all of us. I know it's extra special for you.
Yeah, it's beautiful to see.
Yes, it is. And that's the last I'm going to compliment him on anything. Siobhan?
Sure. So, stigma-free met, as many of you are aware. It is Mental Health Awareness Month, and we've had a great social media campaign running through the village, and this is a little bit of a brag, but within Bergen County, we had several people reach out, and Tenafly Stigma-Free came to our meeting to talk about some best practices and copying our content, which is great. It's ultimate compliment when somebody says, "The website's great. We want to copy it. Your social media campaign's great, and I'm going to copy it." And of course, that has nothing to do with me, but my hard-working committee and how they went out there, and this is the first time we've really incorporated stigma-free messaging within village messaging. So, I want to thank Dawn and Carol for making that happen, and I just thought that was pretty cool to have Tenafly attend, and they're coming back to our meetings. As many of you may have heard, we had the planting and the beautification effort downtown. We had quite a crew. Pam is my official favorite because she showed up and planted, and we got a lot of really great ideas. Beautification is going to work throughout the summer. I'm pleased to announce we've accepted an intern dedicated to beautification from the economic perspective. She's an economics major at William &amp; Mary, and we're very excited to take the next step to do more beautification, whether it be with flowers and pots and plantings, trees from Shade Tree, or even holiday. So, stay tuned for that, and if anybody wants to help next time with the holiday bows, you're all welcome to do that. We had a great access meeting. We're pleased to also say we've adopted an intern there named Gregory, and he's going to be helping with our invitation list. Right now, we're getting a lot of interest again from Ridgewood residents, as well as people outside of Ridgewood who like to attend the sensory-friendly dinners, one of which occurred tonight, so welcome to Gregory. Additionally, we are setting up, and if anybody, well, one of you on the council wants to come, we have a member of Access who's dedicated to exploring examples of inclusionary playgrounds. So, inclusionary is not ADA compliant. It's one step behind. We're hoping to be more grant-worthy in this area next year, and we're taking a field trip, so if anybody wants to come, you're more than welcome. There will be actual kids on the field trip, so hopefully, that will be fun and informational as well.
Did you say actual kids?
Actual kids. Real kids are coming on the field trip. Adopt a sapling. I'm thrilled to say this. Adopt a saplings numbered within the Willard community is a hundred and four. That is our highest number ever, which is great. Obviously, Superstorm Sandy decimated a lot of Ridgewood, but Willard, because it had a significant amount of large trees, took a very big hit. So, a hundred and four is, in our first year, we had thirty-two. Now, we're up to a hundred and four of people willing to adopt, and Willard Schools also going to adopt. I'm thrilled with this because economically, those saplings come in at a much lower rate than a full tree, and it also comes in with added homeowner buy-in. I want to thank the Shade Tree Commission, who, within this big number, has also done an enormous amount of educating and public outreach. We partnered with parks. We had several members, and that's just a pretty big number. So, all of you are signed up to be tree captains. The planting will occur in October. And lastly, we did conclude our sign fundraising effort with Project Graduation. As many of you know, it is a crime to steal a street sign, and it's something that happens quite frequently, or used to happen before this program. And we partnered with the high school to sell signs to graduating seniors. It's a great fundraiser for the school. It also promotes awareness that if you wanted a sign, you can have a sign in a completely legal way. I want to thank our Signal Department, Project Graduation, and everybody who partnered to make this happen, and if you see a street sign down or missing, please let us know. But again, thank you to everybody. It's just a different way of, you know, making people happy, but also hopefully deterring people from stealing our signs, which we need. That's it.
Thanks, Siobhan. Captain Evan?
Captain, thank you. So, I want to do something a little out of the usual and just recount for the public an event that I saw last Wednesday. So, I was driving home Wednesday afternoon, just stopped in to grab a couple of groceries, and as I came to the intersection of Maple and Linwood, I witnessed a somewhat serious car accident. Airbags were deployed. Two cars were at arrest in the intersection. There was a village employee, not a first responder, who was there, who I saw immediately flash on his, in his, I'm sorry, in his Ridgewood vehicle, flash on his lights, blocking the intersection. He's not a police officer. He's not a firefighter. Put on a vest and called for an ambulance and fire and police right away. He went to attend to one, immediately ran through the intersection to attend to one of the more serious injured driver. I pulled over, and I tried to find out if the other driver was okay. While I was there, within, I would say, sixty to ninety seconds, police showed up. I recognized the police officer who showed up because I had the privilege of helping to swear in a couple of months ago, but you wouldn't know that because the way she approached the situation, she ran, not walked, to render aid to the more serious injured person. She moved with the presence and the authority of somebody that had been doing this for twenty years. Within about ninety seconds of her showing up, there was a fire engine. There was an ambulance on scene. At that point, I noticed that the people I was dealing with were probably okay. I let the professionals do their job, and they did it wonderfully. As I was walking back to my car, I saw another police vehicle showed up. He was now tending to traffic, taking notes, getting victims, sorry, getting witnesses' information. Basically, this was what right looks like. I recount the story largely for two reasons. The first is I am always one who complains about taxes. I will continue to complain about taxes. New Jersey is too expensive to live. With that said, that's what you get for your tax dollars here in Ridgewood. You don't get that type of response anywhere else. As my friend Boyd has said before, if you're going to have a heart attack, do it in Ridgewood. I'm going to do one better than that. If you're going to have any serious incident, do it in Ridgewood. The type of response that you will get from our municipality is not anything you will get anywhere else. The second reason I bring the story up is just to remind everyone that sometimes we forget, but if you see a first responder, thank a first responder. Keith, I think you have all the names of the people that I mentioned, village employees. I want to personally commend and thank your staff. Again, this is what right looks like. They were the utmost professionals, handled, you know, what could have been a very difficult situation in just a remarkably efficient and professional way, and makes me proud to be part of this community.
And Councilman, your comments that were emailed to us were sent to both Chief Lyons and Chief Judge to pass along to their respective staffs.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you so much, Evan, and of course, everyone loves to hear stories like that. That's great. Pam?
Okay. First, I want to say that the Outdoor Air, which is Outdoor Art in Ridgewood, an ad hoc committee, met yesterday, and there are so many ideas going around about outdoor art that are so exciting in Ridgewood, and we were discussing various murals in various locations, and anybody know what knit bombing is? That's where you crochet or knit up a tree. You just surround a tree or a street sign with knitting or crocheting, and it's really cute. I saw it in Portland. So, if you're interested in that kind of thing, contact Jeannie Johnson or myself. I did participate in the Ridgewood Beautification Team's Planting Day. It wasn't a day. It was an hour. It was so well-organized. It was so fast, and when you look around town, you're going to be able to watch all these beautiful flowers grow, so thank you to Ridgewood Beautification. It was really fun. I also went to the YMCA's Parkinson's Walk at the Duck Pond, got some exercise in and learned about the program. Our mayor spoke, and it was very educational, and I got to meet a lot of nice people. Let's see, the Schoolhouse Museum had its annual members' meeting with a historic preservation, and if you haven't been to the Schoolhouse Museum, it is one of our Ridgewood treasures. It's not run by the municipality. It's privately run, but boy... It's not run by the municipality, it's privately run, but boy, it's got a great exhibit on right now about children's toys and history, and don't miss it. Affordable Housing. As Keith mentioned, we do have a deadline in June, and for that purpose, there's going to be a special public meeting for the Planning Board, which is not part of our schedule. A regular scheduled meeting is June 3rd, but we're having the special public meeting on June 12th to address the fourth round of affordable housing. Memorial Day Service, this was a particularly memorable one. The students did such a great job. And Post 53 gave a special, what do you call those? Award. And a...
A statue.
A statue to Sally Ann Skurik, who does such a beautiful performance when she sings at all these services. And she was really very moved, so that was, that was nice to see. The Ridgewood AM Rotary Club is going to be painting our fire boxes. You know the fire boxes that you see standing around town? They are the fastest way to get the fire department to a fire, even faster than your cellphone. And so we keep them up in Ridgewood, and Rich Charlton of the Signal Division gives us all the vests and the paint and that sort of thing. And we get out there at 8:00 a.m. in the morning, and we will be covering this year the Heights area into the Willard District. And so thank you to the Rotary for that, which they do every year. I also wanna thank Nancy Beigos for coming up with a way to fund the consultancy by the New York, New Jersey Trail Conference. This is not coming out of taxpayer dollars. She got several donors to get the money together for the trail conference to assess our parks, what they need, and also to do training for volunteers and employees to learn how to maintain the trails. And so I specifically wanna thank the Stable Hands, who contributed, the Conservancy for Ridgewood Public Lands, Health Barn USA, and the Ridgewood AM Rotary Club. Green Ridgewood, this is my last announcement. Green Ridgewood is partnering with Columbia University again, this time with their Master's Program in the Climate School. And 10 or 12 students are starting just about today for a three-month period of assessing the Saddle River Park. So that actually covers six towns. Along the brook, there's been significant erosion, flooding, trees down, and so they'll be looking at the safety of the area, and it will be very interesting to see what they evaluated, what the solutions they might come up with, and we're very excited to work with them. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Pam, and thanks for your never-ending commitment to the environment. You are, you absolutely walk the walk, and we all appreciate that. I also attended the Memorial Day Event, which was, as Pam said, especially moving, and I was so happy to see what a beautiful day it was, and that there were hundreds of people there. It was the best turnout I have ever seen, and I believe this was the 114th consecutive year that the American Legion has hosted this event.
116. The 114 is the number of soldiers who died and are listed on the memorial.
Thank you. Thank you. 116th consecutive year. I think they're gonna make it to 114. I was looking ahead. But it was, it was especially moving, it was lovely. I was also at the Parkinson's Walk, which was, again, hundreds of people out there. I wanna thank my very, very good friend, I call him my brother from another mother because we look so much alike, Ramon Hachey, because this was sponsored by the YMCA. And the person who runs their Parkinson's program is really an angel sent from heaven. Her name is Simona, and this is her life's work, is taking care of Parkinson's people. This is a disease that has affected my own family, and having a community of support like this is absolutely wonderful, just wonderful. So, you know, we live in just such a great community. And another example of that is, I showed up a few minutes late to our closed session this evening at 6:30, because I was at yet another sensory-friendly dinner, which is hosted by the Access Committee, but especially by a woman in town named Jamie Davis, and we are all on Team Jamie on this. And sensory-friendly dinners, if I haven't spoken about them before, families that have children who have sensory issues, autism and other things, don't get out to dinner, because it's difficult for them to take their, their family member who's affected out to a regular restaurant, because they can't deal with the noise and the crowds and the lights. And, and they can't go out themselves, because they have no one really who can care for their kids. And so Jamie has arranged to have restaurants that are closed open up, or have a separate room where the lights are dim, the music is low or off, and these families come and go out to dinner as a family. It is absolutely wonderful. They're taking a break over the summer, but they're gonna recommence in September, and they pretty much do one a month. So I am grateful to Jamie, to Access, for these kinds of events, because it helps everyone in our community. And with that, let's move on to our regular agenda. Keith?
Thank you, Mayor. We have no items under Ridgewood Water or Parking this evening, so we're gonna move right to Item C, which is the Budget. And the first item on tonight's agenda is the renewal of the Crossing Guard Services Contract from July 1st through 2025 through June 30th, 2026. We received bids on this on Wednesday, March 26th. All Cities Management Services was the sole bidder with a quote of $576,352 for 31 morning and 31 afternoon school crossing guard posts for the school year. So Chief Lyons, along with Chris Rude-Sausser, who helped handle the bid for this, are recommending the award of this contract for the next school year.
And this is the same price as last year I saw, right?
Yes.
That's great, wonderful.
Questions, anybody?
I just wanna say that, you know, with two kids in Trevelle, that these, the staff of this does a wonderful job. It's really impressive to me as a parent to see how much effort they put into making sure traffic stops so those kids can get to and from schools safely, safely. So I'm in favor of sticking with the same people again.
Well, good. So the next two items are from the Ridgewood Fire Department, from Chief Judge. As we all know, the Fire Department has not been shy about pursuing grant funds to offset the costs for equipment down at Fire Headquarters. The first resolution tonight is to purchase Solo Rescue Decon Washer. This was, the vendor is TJII Incorporated from Turtle Creek, Pennsylvania. The amount for the decon washer is $36,395.50. This will be used to decontaminate SCAB units, helmets, boots, gloves, and offer a comprehensive solution to clean firefighting gear. Their current gear washer is only used for turnout coats and pants, so this will have an expanded capacity as to what it can be used on down at the Fire Department. This funding is from the American Rescue Plan Firefighter Grant. The full cost of the purchase, as I said, is $36,395.50, and that will fully be covered by the American Rescue Plan Grant from 2024.
This is great. I mean, it's critically important we get our firefighters the right gear, but to do so with grant money is doubly great, and it's fantastic. Please thank Chief Judge for me.
Yeah, I think we, I echo those comments. I noted that in these, in these two items on our agenda, it's an $85,000 outlay that is, Chief Judge has gotten $68,000 from grants out of 85, so really to be commended and thanked by all the taxpayers.
Next item is a resolution to purchase firefighter turnout gear. This is a resolution to buy this from Strategic Safety Dynamics of Smithtown, New York, in the amount of $49,033.80. The breakdown of available funding is from the American Rescue Plan Firefighter Grant 2024, $32,000 to 1961. We have money in the 2024 capital account for firefighter gear, $13,003.36, and the balance of $38,010.83 will be covered by the 2025 capital improvement ordinance. This will replace 12 sets of turnout gear, which are outdated, and will buy new firefighter hoods for every fire department member currently serving.
Great.
Everybody good? Let's go.
Okay, the next issue is award a state contract for manhole frames and covers. This is being recommended by the Engineering Department. This is for the purchase of manhole frames and covers to replace worn and defective ones when a street is resurfaced, resurfaced as part of the Village Road Resurfacing Program. The manhole frames and covers are then given to the contractors to install on our streets. These purchases are made through the New Jersey State Cooperative Purchasing Program. He's recommending the award of this to Campbell's Foundry of Harrison, New Jersey, for a not-to-exceed of $36,310.
Good?
Yep.
Let's go.
Okay, the next item is the replacement of the Liberty Court Recorder software, and also the upgrades to the sound system here in the council chambers. I'd like to invite up Dylan Hanson, our Director of Information Technology, to explain what the scope of services would be here for this upgrade, especially to the sound system here in the courtroom, so. Dylan, the floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening, Dylan.
All right, so the quote that, well, the proposal I got from the company BTS is to upgrade the recording system that Heather currently uses to four minutes. It's about 10-plus years old. And then the other part of this is to add two additional speakers in the rear section and the midsection to cover that one dead area. Additional amplifiers, so we can control the rear from the front. New digital soundboards for the back that will allow us to control, so we can make people, we can turn up the gains on people that speak softer, or we can turn down the gains on people that speak louder. Processors to avoid any echoing. So with all this, we should be able to control or gain a lot more noise in the backend for people in the audience to hear. This does not include new microphones. We're gonna look at that after this phase is done. I know that was a thought.
I think that was, you saw the look on everyone's face here, so.
Any questions?
Yeah, I mean, so, and thank you, I know I gave Keith the heads-up that I was gonna be questioning some of this, so thank you, thank you for coming tonight. Listen, I know this has been a constant problem since I, at least since I've been here even longer, about people complaining they can't hear. $28,000 for speakers sounds a bit much.
Five, about $6,000 is just for the software.
Right, so I have less concerns with that, but I think was it $28,000 for improve the sound in here, outside of the recording software?
No, it's 28 for everything.
Okay.
$6,000, that's for the, for the license for the recording software, that has to be court-compliant.
So about $22,000, $23,000, and then it's for the audio upgrades. I understand from Keith, we've not gotten complaints from the courtroom when they use this space, and I know we have to do something, but I have a couple of questions. The first is, is there a cheaper alternative than spending over 20 grand on speakers? Second, is there grant money that we can somehow get for this that would cheapen this or make this, you know, more palatable? And then finally, I know I saw that we're gonna be discussing the loops later tonight. Is there a way to make that more widely available for folks, rather than us spending, again, $20-some-odd thousand on speakers and upgrades?
The loop is good for people that have hearing-assisted devices. It's not, wouldn't work for everybody. As far as, it's not just for speakers, it's for wiring, labor, replacing all our sound processors in the back, amplifiers. It's not just speakers, there's a lot involved into this, plus the, it's about a four-to-five-day install project.
From what it sounded like, there's a soundboard that you'll be able to tweak it, depending on who's talking.
Yes.
My question is, that did a firm come in and make these recommendations, or did we go through a catalog and pick out what we want?
Dylan, why don't you, why don't you explain to the council the fact that you had two vendors both come in and both independently look at the system? Let's start with that.
So we did have two different companies come in, one for Mid Jersey and one from up here. The one from up here was recommended by, or is utilized by other townships for their audio systems, and they were happy with them. But we did come back, and only one came back with a full proposal.
Was that the same one that we had gotten the referral on, or that was a different company?
The referral.
Okay, so the company you were proposing was the one we'd gone to another municipality, and they had positive things to say.
Yeah, and they're also one of the resellers for the Liberty Software. They're one of the regional resellers.
And this is a different company than the company that initially did our audio?
Some of the people have merged from the old company into this company, but the old company doesn't exist anymore.
Councilman, through, through, through the mayor, BIS pretty much has the market in North Jersey. They also have the state contract, so for municipalities to contract with them, it's a relatively easy process. We did have a second set of eyes come in here, because I didn't want to only have one proposal, and I wanted to see if the proposals differed. But you spoke to that company, but they were somewhat difficult to get a hold of, too, correct? And my concern is, is if they're not hungry when they're trying to sell us the product, how are they gonna be if they get the contract and then we need them to maintain the product?
And I didn't make any recommendations to them. We brought them down, we showed them what we had, we told them the complaints, everything, and we let them go through everything and make the recommendations.
So, because you said the microphones aren't going to be upgraded, did they make any recommendations specific to the microphones?
They looked at the microphones, they said most, for most part, they are in good shape. They recommended new wind screens for them, and once we'll get them onto the new sound processors, they'll be able to tell if they need to be sent out for repairs, if they do, or if they're fine, but they felt they were in good shape.
I mean, that's odd, because it seems like when we talk, and like I'm obnoxiously close to the microphone right now, and normally if people can't hear me, they raise their hand, and I think people can hear me. So it seems like we're gonna spend $22,000 to fix what may be a microphone problem. I mean, can everybody hear me when I'm speaking now?
Or a councilman problem?
Okay, well, assume people wanna hear from me in the first place, right? No, I know, seriously, I think some of us do this occasionally, don't think, but like, before we spend $20-some-odd thousand, is it worth trying the new microphones or doing something else?
So right now, we can't turn the gains up on these microphones, because then you get nothing from feedback from the speakers. So we can't make them any more sensitive. With the newer equipment, we'll be able to adjust that and make them more sensitive, cuz we'll be, we'll be able to avoid the feedback, according to the new company.
So, and to follow up on Evan's point, because I, I feel exactly the same way, that I don't know if there's technology that, but I imagine there is, that has a microphone that, as long as you're in the general vicinity, it will pick up your, your voice. I do the same thing that Evan's saying, is I lean into the microphone to speak, and I don't feel comfortable being, and you hear me say it to, to people at the podium. So will this allow people at the podium and on the dais to be able to not have to be this close to the microphone to speak, to be heard?
According to the vendor, we're supposed to get better usage out of the microphones. We should be at a better distance, and they should be utilized better.
And in fairness to Dylan, he's relaying to you what the vendor has reported to us.
Nobody's being critical of Dylan. We're just, we're just, we're just asking the questions. And, you know, my first question on this really is, are there better microphones that pick up, that pick up our voice from a greater distance?
But I think what Dylan's saying is that the acoustics of this room mean that even if you had a better, a quote, "better" microphone, it's still gonna have, he can't turn it up higher.
No, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just wondering, again, if there is a, as Evan said, a less expensive alternative that's just the microphone, like a better microphone. Is there such a thing?
So a less expensive microphone, these are actually very expensive.
No, 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 no. Less expensive alternative than the $22,000. And/or, even if it's, I think the point is, even if we're more expensive than $22,000, if there was a microphone that addressed the issue that we're dealing with, which is, again, some of us will turn to, you know, I'll turn to Siobhan and... with, which is, again, some of us will turn to, you know, I'll turn to Siobhan and, and not speak directly into it, maybe I'm not going to be heard as well.
Right now, the current equipment, we can't adjust better than what it is right now. So if we were to put a better microphone on it, it doesn't mean it's going to eliminate feedback. With the current equipment that we currently have, it doesn't have that ability. So hopefully with the new equipment, we will be able to eliminate that, make these more sensitive, and they'll pick up better. You're still going to have to speak in towards the microphone, you can't, it's not going to pick up if you're talking this way.
Are there microphones that, that allow, allow people to be at a greater distance and that it gets picked up, their voices get picked up better? Do you, do you know if there are microphones?
I don't know without, without experimenting with other brands.
If, if the council would like us to, you know, we can forego putting this on the public meeting and invite the, invite the vendor in to a work session if you want to have a presentation before you make a decision to spend this money.
I have a couple of questions. So, one, this vendor's in Florida, but they're under the state contract. Can you send us a list of what other municipalities use them locally? Two, I also want to say that the audio is a problem, so clearly we're going to spend on Heather, because we need that, but this is also with planning, zoning, and the court uses this room, so it's a pervasive problem beyond the council, right? And it's been going on forever, forever. And we have tried other microphones, and when the microphone becomes more sophisticated, the kickback comes in. So you and I have had the shuffle effect with the higher resolution. So I would like to know, just, you know, between us or whoever wants to know, other local municipalities, too. I'd love to see if any of them broadcast, so we could like watch a YouTube video to see if the audio's improved, because then we could actually see it in effect. And I, I mean, clearly, a lot of important things happen in this room, and they need to be clear and concise. It's not just us, the audio over there is probably the worst, and we can't always hear public comments. So I think the fact that this room serves many people, it's worth the investment on making sure the investment's clear.
So I know, so I asked, sorry, so I know, Keith, I asked you this offline, and you told me that the courtroom has never complained about the sound, but Siobhan raised a good point, I did not ask about zoning and planning. Do we know if they have the same problems that we have here at council, at council meetings with, with the sound?
I mean, anecdotally, I'll say, I mean, I attended them, you could, I would say yes. And the thing that, the thing, I think trying to focus on a microphone is, is being short-sighted, because that, that's why I want, I would prefer to see what the proposal is about why they suggested it, because it's the acoustics of this room and having, you know, it's not a new program, it's seven, eight-plus years, and there's been other patches to try to fix it, and, and it still isn't working. So to me, if they studied this room specifically, they're going to have a soundboard which then can target where in the room, the volumes and all that kind of stuff. That makes sense to me.
It's also not being a sound engineer, but if you go home and you watch the YouTube video, we're crystal clear.
That's right.
We are crystal clear, so it's, it's like a, it is a local issue here regarding the acoustics of the room that deserves to be looked at. I think the two speakers in the back would help. We get more complaints from the back of the room than the front of the room, so, I mean, I, I would still like the additional information, and I'd love to see it, but, you know, it's, it's shocking to me, because when people can't hear us here, and we've had several legit complaints, I do go home, and, I mean, we're not even a problem on the audio, when we watch, when you watch back, because I'm like, oh, is it us? Is it me and Evan? Are we worth twenty-two thousand dollars?
So through, through you, Mayor, a few comments. First of all, BIS, from what I understand, bought out Gramco. Am I correct in saying that?
What's that?
BIS bought out Gramco. Correct? So Gramco had the market in northern New Jersey on audio visual systems in facilities like this. BIS bought them out. They are based out of Florida, but they have offices and they have teams that are operating here in northern New Jersey. So I, I don't think there should be a concern about where it is, and they have the New Jersey State Contract. Secondly, every other municipality uses this firm. I put out a poll, I got feedback from, every municipality that responded indicated that BIS was their vendor. So I could tell you, every, all three of my former employers all used BIS at the time it was Gramco. Thirdly, I don't think watching, respectfully, I don't think watching a YouTube video is going to change anything, because everything we've heard about the complaints in this room, anyone who's watching from home has always said, and always been consistent, that the audio at home is not an issue, it's the audio when you're in this room that's a problem. To Councilmember White's inquiry, I've, I've never heard Jane, who's the Secretary to the Boards, or Chris Rudishhauser, who attends basically every planning and zoning board meeting, indicate that there were audio issues. Pam, you sit in at every planning board meeting, has there ever been a complaint in the room about audio?
Well, if there's somebody who can't be heard, it's usually somebody who's got a handheld mic and is going up to show us something on, on a design, and they forgot to bring the mic up to their face. So that's a different issue. I do want to say, thank you, ten years ago, it was much worse in this room. It was like this, it sounded like you couldn't hear a thing. You heard nothing in, in any of the rows. You could sit in the front row and you couldn't figure out what was going on. So you got us really far along, and I really appreciate that. What drives me crazy about these is the neck is not long enough. It ergonomically doesn't work when it's drilled into the dais here and I'm sitting back here. And it, it just, it's hard on the back, it's hard at the tables, and if it had a longer neck, that's all I want, is a longer neck, same mic, I want a longer neck.
So listen, Keith, just cut to the chase. First of all, by the way, Dylan, thank you, and again, my, my criticality here is not of you and Keith, and you guys did your jobs and what you're supposed to do, be very clear with that, I, I thank you for that. And the sound is better than it once was. I either want to hear from the vendor, or I want to go back to the vendor and say, is there a less expensive option? I'm not comfortable with the information for me, author, you know, spending, again, I'm one of five, so they, I can certainly be outvoted, but I, I don't know if I'm comfortable spending the twenty-two thousand on this without at least asking the question, can we get something that's cheaper, that still makes it better? And by the way, Pam makes a great point, I'm like, hunched over, it could just be the better mics, I don't know, but again, twenty-two thousand dollars, we should ask the question.
More, more than a cheaper option is I want to hear, you know, a sound engineer is a professional, and that's my mantra, let's go to professionals and have them give us advice. So it's more of, why are they recommending what they're recommending? You know, it's like, you know, it might be, I mean, look at these, they're crazy ceilings with crazy lights that's absorbing the sound and bouncing around, and if they're able to compensate for that, and, and with the system, makes sense. But to me, I would feel more comfortable understanding the science behind the recommendation, which maybe is in their proposal, which could be shared.
Through you, Mayor, I would recommend that we bring the vendor in here to a work session and have these questions be asked of the professional. I mean, again, neither, Dylan's the IT guy, he knows more about this than I do, certainly, but he's not an expert in the acoustics of this room, sound systems, all of that type of thing. I think you need to hear from the professionals to get a level of comfort that this is the right solution for this problem.
I have one more question. You mentioned a dead zone. Where is the dead zone, and what do you mean by dead?
Where it's muffled, when you sit in the certain areas in the crowd, in the, in like the back corners, or in the, right underneath in the back by the pictures, you don't get as much of a sound that you do as if you were by, by the speaker or under the one speaker. That's there currently, there's one surface mount speaker right above, way to the right. You can see it on the, underneath the ceiling.
Isn't that a fire alarm?
No. No, that, not that, that's the fire alarm, up on the ceiling.
Isn't that a camera?
No.
There's a circle.
Underneath of that.
There's a circle up there.
He's pointing at it.
Oh, I see it. It's a little off-colored, yeah.
It's recessed, okay.
You can see it, it's a beige. That's one of the speakers, but it doesn't give out enough.
So have we ever, just to belabor it, have we ever thought about pulling up some of the chairs, so the zone of hearing is smaller? Because we never, we never really have a full sitting audience unless it's ceremonial. So right now, I, I mean, we have a lot of empty chairs in two squares. Could we make the squares smaller and eliminate the dead zones by not having seating in them?
Um, I, we could, but I mean, I've been to meetings that I thought were going to be like five people, and fifty people show up, or it could be, so I, I don't know if you want to gamble on that, but we could try it.
I think we just need to hear from the professionals.
I agree. I, I agree, and, and, and I have to tell you, I, I think Pam's, I, I don't think, I've been sitting here for three years, and I, I didn't really realize how, how hunched over we are, and I think that that's, that, not only that, but it's also, if you forget to lean in, then you're, and, and you turn away. I, I think that that's half the problem. Do you, and, and I'm, we're going to ask the, the people who come in, do you know if there's an extension on this thing that we can get?
I, there might be ones that are longer, I can look them up. I know that the functionality of these is supposed to be within ten inches, so you should be, I should be able to sit back here and talk into it, and you should hear me clearly.
It's the acoustics in the room that make us do this. So if we fix that, we could sit back, as I think is what.
That'd be great. Okay, let's, let's bring them in, and let's, and let's ask them questions.
So Dylan, if you could reach out to the vendor and see if they're available either next Wednesday, or for the, the work, the second work session in June, and we could schedule them in, and you can let Heather and I know what works for them, we'll do a presentation at the start of the meeting.
And can their, can their proposal to us be included in the next package, so we can just kind of read through what, how they assessed it?
Yes.
Great. Thanks so much, Dylan.
No problem. Thank you, Dylan.
Okay, the next item is the award of purchase for three sludge pumps. This is for the wastewater plant down on Prospect Street in Glen Rock. We have several current pumps that are in the process of being worn out, and they are requiring frequent repairs. Chris is recommending allocating the money for these sludge pumps to Rapid Pump and Meter Service, not to exceed three hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Everybody good? So funny, we, we spent quite a bit of time on a twenty-two thousand dollar item, and three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollar item kind of flies right through.
But this is for thickened sludge. This is good stuff.
Someone argued that the microphones are for that as well.
Next item is the award of purchase for flood mitigation devices for Village Hall. As you know, during flood events, we use door dams at the Level One entrances to Village Hall to hold back floodwaters from entering the building. The door dams that we currently have worked well since they were installed in late two thousand and eight. That event overtopped, the only event that overtopped them was Hurricane Irene in late August two thousand and eleven. The current panels in the system is getting worn out. There are seepages that are a concern of the engineering and the Signal Division. They are making a recommendation that we award a contract to Orange Flood Control of Old Tapan to replace the door dam system and put in place new flood mitigation devices at all of our entrances to Village Hall. The amount not to exceed one hundred and seventy-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. We have funding through a number of old capital accounts to cover this expenditure.
I am just curious, how many entrances is, are we covering with this?
Well, on this side of the building, the community center, the main entrance downstairs, and then multiple entranceways in the back along the, along the police department entrance, and to the break room downstairs.
And I am completely in support of this for all the obvious reasons. I just want to note that, and, and I'm sure that this is the right amount, but boy, one hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars sounds like a lot of money for what are basically, you know, rubber mats that are on posts. And again, I'm oversimplifying, it's just, just sounded like a lot of money.
Yeah, I mean, listen, I think there is, is more of a science behind this.
Clearly.
Than, than that, because obviously they are installed and designed to prevent any type of seepage of water from coming through them during a high-water event, sands it, overtopping it like it did in Hurricane Irene. I do know that Rich Charleston extensively explored options here, and after reviewing all of the options available, Orange Flood Control was, was their strong recommendation.
Got you. Everybody good?
No, I have a question. When I look at the, the police entrance and the lunchroom entrance, there are these things, and I think they're superimposed in the picture maybe, or I don't know if they're really there, but these white things, and I think they are the jam mounts on the right and left. And that is to receive these, these barriers, so that they lock into place. But, and, and they're definitely not nice-looking. I don't see them at the main entrance or the, the employee entrance. No, maybe it's there, I can't tell from that photo, but the, the community center entrance, I don't see it there either. So why are they, oh no, that might be a community.
There are, there are, there are slip strips. Yeah, some of them, some of them are built into the retain, the facade of the building. Like if you get, if you go to the page, these aren't page numbered, but if you go to the Sallyport, the garage door in the police department, you'll see how the, the tongue and groove is built into the facade of the lower part of the cement wall.
Okay, so, but it's.
The ones on the front door, Pam, are outside.
Now, keep in mind, there are.
They're outside the photo of.
Outside the photo of the front door.
There are, there are areas where the doorway is wider, and it needs center supports. So there are actually devices built into the, to the cement that allows you to install an arm during a flood event to connect the door dam.
Oh, I see.
So it doesn't just connect from tongue and groove to tongue and groove, there are other, there are other mounts that are installed into the ground to adequately put these in place for a flood event.
Okay.
All right?
All right.
Anybody else? Let's go.
Okay, item eight on the agenda is a change order to request additional funding for required irrigation services. This is coming from our Director of Parks and Recreation, Nancy Beigos. The community garden irrigation system has experienced some continuous breakages for this past several years due to age and substandard piping. They've determined that the most effective and sustainable solution is to upgrade the existing infrastructure to a more reliable irrigation system. The two thousand and twenty-four irrigation bid was contracted for eighteen thousand dollars. The additional costs of the repairs in this request are six thousand five hundred and seventy-five, for a total amount of twenty-four five seventy-five.
Questions? Let's go.
Okay, number nine is sanitary sewer connection fees. Chris Rudishhauser, our village engineer, is recommending that the village council consider increasing the fees for connecting to the village's sanitary sewer collection system. The last time the village adjusted the fees was three years ago. Connection fees are a one-time fee, annual service charges will still apply to any new connections from outside of the village, and he has an add and delete section attached to the memorandum that shows what the adjustments would be for each of the different categories in the ordinance.
Everybody good?
Questions?
Let's go.
Okay, under policy, we have a letter here from the Ridgewood Open Space Committee from its chairman, Jim Bossler, who spoke earlier tonight. They are recommending a ballot referendum for the November two thousand and twenty-five election to adjust the open space tax here in the village. Presently, the open space tax stands at a half a penny for each one hundred dollars evaluation. That averages to thirty-six dollars per household in two thousand and twenty-four. They are making a recommendation to up it to point zero one cents per hundred dollars evaluation, which would collect approximately seventy-two dollars per household. They're requesting that this referendum be placed on the November ballot to propose increasing by the half a penny, and this decision would need to be made, I would say, no later than mid-August in order for Heather's office to transmit the ballot question to the county clerk, John Hogan, to be placed on the November ballot if the council is inclined to move forward with this.
Your thoughts, counsel?
Can, can I start?
Yeah, you start.
Thanks. So I'm, I'm starting because I'm the liaison for open space. So I, I think it's important first to, that we look at the successes that our current open space taxes had. Hibernacle, I mean, everybody seems to love it, and it's, it's one of our crown jewels here in the village, and through this open space, not only were we able to purchase it, but it has been paid off. Second is we were able to expand Citizens Park, so it's a pure rectangle now, again, thanks to the open space. And with Shedler, while there is disagreement about what goes on, on the land, I think that we can all agree that to save that historic house and to have some sort of park there is absolutely better than a 7-Eleven, an industrial gas station, or some sort of complex that would bring a lot of traffic. And that property was saved thanks to open space. And now I'm going to switch hats, Mayor, and put on my Parks and Rec hat, and that, because what And that, because what we noticed is that, starting during the pandemic, our, our parks, which is our open space, saw a significant increase in usage. And that, that usage has not decreased. So a lot of what we talk about at Parks and Rec is how to manage that. And it's not just sports, it's people just being outdoors. It's, you know, like the yoga in, in different locations, um, things like that. So it's, it's, it's just that, one of the benefits, I believe, of the pandemic is that it got more people outdoors and they're enjoying that open space. Um, and all of this we're talking about is a half a penny, which I think is significant. You know, so that's an additional $36, which, you know, is, is minimal when you see what, you know, you can get two jars of honey for $36. It's not that much.
Good, good honey.
But a, a half a penny to a full penny could bring a lot. And, you know, there's talks about problems with overdevelopment. And, and the thing is, is with open space, by having the money to be able to, to act quickly when properties become available, then we can stop overdevelopment. Because once it's a park, it can't be a crowded building. And so that's why I'm absolutely in favor of letting the residents of Ridgewood decide that this is a good deal to have on the agenda.
Thanks, Frank.
May I?
By all means.
As the former liaison to the Open Space Committee, um, I'll just start with one nitpicky thing. Um, it's not .01 cents, it's .01 dollar. And we're going from .5 cents to one cent.
No, no.
No, it's actually, it's a half a cent.
So it's .005.
.5 cents is half a cent.
We're going from half a cent to one cent for every $100 evaluation.
But Pam, it's .005, not .05.
Not cents, dollars.
This doesn't make any sense.
It is, I get it. Um, it is what I said it is and this is all unnecessary.
Anyway, um, up to now, over the last 20-plus years, we have used the Open Space Trust Fund to pay our debt service in the purchases of, of parkland. And we, we've paid off Habernacle. And we are the stewards of our parks. And we should be good stewards of our parks. And the other thing that we are statutorily allowed to use this fund for is maintenance of the parks. And when you walk through our parks, you will see the evidence of flooding, erosion, invasive plants. We could be maintaining our parks better at a penny per $100 of valued property. Um, and I hope that our citizens will consider that and make intelligent decisions. I'm not telling them how to vote. I just think it's right to put this on the ballot and let the citizens make a decision.
Who else?
I'm going to speak on this. So, um, to be clear, this is a wonderful use of tax dollars. Wonderful use of tax dollars. Um, this will add about $36 to your average tax bill. Um, as I mentioned before, New Jersey, northern New Jersey is already too expensive and this type of slippage concerns me. With that said, um, that's not the question before us tonight. The question before us tonight simply is, do we want to let the taxpayers decide? And the only thing I like more than fiscal responsibility is democracy. Um, so while I'll defer my personal judgment on this, although again, it's a wonderful cause, um, you know, in terms of weighing the cause versus the tax implications, um, I like the idea of putting it to a referendum vote. Let the people who have to pay it, you know, including us as residents, uh, make that call. Um, so I support the measure to put it on the referendum and hope that there is a vigorous and spirited conversation about this, uh, ahead of the election.
Siobhan?
I'm a big fan of open space. I want to thank the members of open space who took the time to write this. Um, a lot of everything that's been said, I just want to make sure the public understands that what we're debating is whether or not to place a public question that would increase a dedicated tax and then the public gets to decide. Um, that's a beautiful thing. That's excellent. If, if, if all five of us agree to put it on and then we all change our mind, we have no say if it prevails and we have no say if it's defeated. Um, our parks are overutilized and probably our most overutilized park isn't even related to sports. It's Van Ness. Um, I think this is wonderful. It's a unique opportunity. Without open space, um, Habernacle would have been housing and Shedler would have been a strip mall. There's just no denying it. And that would have been too much development for our village. Um, I think it's a great, great idea to go out. Additionally, why I support it this year is it's a governor's election. So, you know, for us to place this on an off-cycle where low voter turnout would be lower and then have it down ballot, that's like womp, womp, womp. This actually allows the question to see greater light because the citizens of New Jersey and Ridgewood will be more vested in turning out for the top of the ballot, the mid-ballot, and hopefully this bottom ballot. So, um, I love it. I, I do want to say just a little bit of history. We implemented it, um, and it prevailed. And this is our second attempt to increase it. It did fail, I think, when the year Liam was born. Um, so, uh, anyway, I think this is great. I think it's a great thing. If you couldn't hear what I was saying, I'll, I'll tell you tomorrow. Um, but I want to thank everybody, um, for doing it. And I just want to remind the public that this is, when property becomes available, if we don't have the resources to purchase it, it's a unique opportunity. So I just think this is a wonderful question and I want to thank the clerk's office for being so supportive and making it happen.
Thanks, Siobhan. And, um, I agree with a lot of what was said tonight. Um, you know, certainly our parks are, boy, they get a lot of use. And, um, the example that Pam cited that, excuse me, was it Pam or Siobhan, forgive me, that said that Habernacle would have been housing and, thank you, Siobhan. And, um, and Shedler would have been, I think Frank also said it, would have been a gas station or 7-Eleven. Um, those are really graphic examples. Um, at the end of the day, um, I really like the illustration that Evan made, which is, the only thing, um, you like more than open space is democracy. And, or, excuse me, lower taxes.
Fiscal responsibility.
Fiscal responsibility. Yeah, I'm not quoting anybody well tonight. Um, fiscal, and again, fiscal responsibility is democracy. And, and again, our vote tonight is to let the public vote on this because there are good arguments to be made on all sides. And, and putting this out to a referendum is the only way to decide if this is the right thing and let those people who are paying for it make that decision. So I think you have your direction, Keith and Heather.
So, so mayor, this actually falls with Heather. Um, what the process would be is that if the council were inclined to move forward with this, Heather's office would prepare a resolution. Embedded in that resolution would be the actual ballot question, um, as was done back in 2004, uh, 2004, which is attached to your memorandum tonight. Um, and then that, upon adoption of the council, uh, the authorization, simply the authorization, not an endorsement thereof, but simply an authorization to transmit that question to John Hogan's office in, at the county clerk's, um, office to be able to, um, add this to the ballot for the November 4th election.
Terrific. We're all set. Let's move on.
Heather, anything you want to add to that? You've been through this before. Okay.
Good.
All right, great. All right, under operations tonight, uh, we have authorization to enter into the inter-local purchasing system called TIPS, which is a natural, national purchasing cooperative. Any opposition?
Nope.
Okay. Um, item two is to accept donation, um, for the New Jersey, New York, New Jersey Trail Conference for the municipal trail maintenance project. Um, as we've discussed in the past, uh, $8,600 of outside funding is necessary to approve and proceed with the proposal from the New Jersey, New, uh, New York, New Jersey Trail Conference. Um, and that money has been raised through the efforts of the Conservancy for Public Lands. Uh, $3,000, the Ridgewood Rotary Club for $2,500, Health Barn USA for $2,200, and the Ridgewood Stable Hands for $900, all of which have been deposited into the Recreation Trust account here at the village. Uh, the proposal and quote, uh, briefly outlines the scope of services for the village of Ridgewood, but it will include, uh, an assessment of walkthrough and GPS data collection along with trail systems, uh, with the following municipal parks, which are primarily passive. Um, Habernacle, although that's active too, but Grove Park, Kings Pond, Gypsy Pond Park, 20 Pond Park, and Dunham Trail. A prepared resolution is attached to accept these funds and affirm the approval of this project as attached, so that may move forward. Any questions?
No, but I, I personally want to thank all four of these local organizations. Um, uh, Ridgewood Conservancy, the Rotary, Health Barn, and Stable Hands, um, for putting their money where their mouths are, that they are, they are really community partners, um, and they want to make this happen. So I am so grateful to them.
Next item is the declaration of surplus property from the sanitation division. Um, this is a vehicle, uh, I'm sorry, from the engineering division. This is a vehicle to dispose of, that's a 2010 Ford Escape, which is used by engineering. It's been flooded several times and they're, they've managed to recover the cost for further use. Flooding has led to accelerated corrosion of the vehicle's subframe. Um, the Ford Escape, um, will be, uh, taking the vehicle for trading on future leases of vehicles for their department associated with the police. Um, any questions about that?
No, just love the fact we got 15 years out of this vehicle and love the fact that we're replacing it, not with a new vehicle, but with an existing vehicle in the fleet. So thank you for that.
There you go. And the last item on the agenda, I'd like to call Carol Balkowski, um, our Director of Communications and Special Projects. Uh, she has been working on a grant application through Bergen County to install hearing loops, um, in the youth lounge, the senior lounge, and here in the courtroom. Um, Carol has prepared a memo, a very detailed memo, uh, with backup information and she's going to walk the council through this, uh, grant opportunity tonight.
There we go. Did you, um, did you want me to just run quickly through the, the entire, okay. So I, I don't know if you've ever heard of a hearing loop before, but a year ago, I had no idea what one was. And in a nutshell, it, it's the gold standard of technology for people who are experiencing hearing loss. So essentially, if you walk, if they install a hearing loop in this room, a person with a T-coil-enabled either cochlear implant or a hearing aid would walk into this room, their hearing aid would click into the coil and they would be able to hear everything that is said in this room totally adapted to their device, clearly, without any background noise and without any distractions at all.
And they don't have to do anything.
They don't have to do anything. And I can get into the nitty-gritty with you of how this is actually done?
Please don't.
Okay. Anyway, um, Bergen County, we were too late to apply for this grant last year. We found out about it at the last minute. But this year, we got a little bit more notice and the New Jersey Department of Human Services is offering grants to counties, a maximum of $70,000 per county. So Bergen County, thank you to Siobhan, who reached out to her contacts at the county, and I contacted all the commissioners at the county. Siobhan got on the phone and Bergen County is willing to apply for the grant on behalf of Ridgewood. So the maximum of the grant is $70,000. We wouldn't know if we would, we don't know if we're going to get anything, but we don't know if we're going to get that max amount. And in preparation for this grant, at the beginning of the year, Keith asked me to, um, to research hearing loops. So I reached out to, I, I found out that there are people who can say, yeah, I can do a hearing loop and they, they really can. So there, I got quotes from two, uh, places. Uh, and the one that I would recommend is Audio Directions. They came out here, Chip and Sally, both came out here. Chip is the gentleman who would actually install the hearing loops. They spent two hours on site with Deanna Shablik, who runs the Hilt programs and with Yovan in the engineering department. Spent two hours going through all three of the rooms. He actually got, had his, brought his tools with him, picked up the carpeting to see how easy it would be to get the loop underneath the carpeting. Just top to bottom, fantastic job. And their quote for installing everything in the three rooms is $62,500. But then we also need to have audio equipment installed in the senior lounge and in the youth center. So, um, they recommended a vendor who they work with and Rich Tarleton got a quote from them. Installing that equipment would be $19,050. So doing the math, it would be a total of $81,550 and the grant is only 70. So the attorneys at Bergen County just want to know whether the council would be willing to fund the extra $11,550 or if we didn't have those funds, we could reduce the number of rooms so that the total would be $70,000. It would be, you know, at the grant limit.
So my recommendation to the council is, um, we do have some money in open capital through IT that we can bridge the gap with that number. Um, I think it should be a priority, uh, to install this, uh, equipment in this room and certainly downstairs because both the youth lounge and the senior lounge are both used by the senior community. Um, and we have some, just, just as we have acoustic issues in this room, we have acoustic issues downstairs, especially in the youth lounge. Um, when they have the Hilt meetings, when they have different programming for our seniors. So to be able to do this would be a marked improvement and I think, uh, it's supported by the Community Senator Advisory Board as well.
And Sheila Brogan and, um, Beth Abbott, the co-chairs of Age-Friendly Ridgewood are so excited about this.
That's great. I, I'm, I'm so excited too, uh, as a senior. But, um, here, we have a carpet and the loop would go under the carpet?
It would go underneath the carpet.
But in the rooms downstairs, there's no carpet.
Precisely.
So what do they do?
In the, in the, I keep on calling it the senior lounge, in the youth center. We spent an over half hour in there deciding, do we go up on the ceiling? Do we do this? But you can't go on the ceiling because of the grounding with the wires and all this kind of stuff. So Chip had said that, that the wires, he showed it to us, it's extremely thin copper wire and they would run it along the floor. And it would not, and, and they actually run it in a figure eight pattern to maximize, you know, where, where the people are seating. So in, in some, in some instances, they'll just run a wire around the perimeter of the room, but then the people in the center wouldn't be able to, to hear properly. So they run it in a figure eight pattern and Deanna and I were talking to him. He said it is absolutely not a tripping hazard at all. Uh, they've done it in many, uh, many locations. Yovan pointed out that that room floods and he said it would not, if there's water in that room, that would also not be a problem.
I have two questions, Carol.
Sure.
The first is, like, what, what's the life expectancy of the system? Like, how long does it last?
Uh, in their proposal, they, I believe they said it's guaranteed for seven years.
Nice. And then second, did I see that included in the prices, like portable headphones for people?
Yeah, what's, what is exciting about this is, I've learned a lot about hearing aids too. If you have a new hearing aid, like 70% of the new hearing aids have the T-coil in them. Older models don't. So in that case, they are giving us, included in the price, four portable listening de, sorry, portable listening devices per room. So you would just, someone who's, you know, in charge like Deanna, would just give them the person the device and they would be able to click, click in. They would, they would be able to connect.
The portable things though, are, do you have to have a hearing aid or can it be just somebody that?
You don't have to have a hearing aid, which is really interesting because, just, I'm, I'm going to overshare a little bit. I've had a hearing, permanent hearing loss on my right ear since I was 35. And it's a problem at times. And I was just in, in the community, in the youth center, uh, for an event. It was very difficult to hear. So for somebody like me, I could bop in there and put those on and be able to hear perfectly.
Yeah, that's cool.
Yeah.
It, it seems to me that, that if we can get anything close to $70,000, that the additional money is well-spent. And, you know, for those who are fortunate enough never to have suffered hearing loss, um, I don't think they realize how isolating hearing loss can be. So I am, I am as excited as Beth Abbott and Sheila Brogan are about this prospect. And, and thank you so much for all your research and forgive me for not wanting to hear the, the technical side of, of all of this because you, you, all the rest of this is exactly what I wanted to hear.
If anybody wants the nitty-gritty, just feel free to reach out. It's exciting.
I do just want to say thank you to Carol. Access jumped on this pretty quickly. I sent it to them and Carol, and Carol really were right up to the edge. But I want to remind people, hearing loss is not just an issue with age. It's an issue cochlear, so, and our local high school does, um, offer American Sign Language. And last year, Access had a reading with sign language. It's very prevalent. It's typically with kids can be born with it or high fever. And while I'm very mindful, it is, um, it's the invisible disability because often you can't tell. And particularly with the aged community, it, you know, it just shows up and people don't even realize it until they're, it's too far gone. But this is huge for me. I fully support it. I hope we get 70,000 and I hope the full council, if it's 11,000, that we make it up. It's, um, you know, we've got, all. It's, you know, we've all gotten a letter from the community center, there's improvements to be made down there, and I just, I can't thank you enough, Carol, I'm so grateful. And I hope Bergen County's watching this and finds this incredibly grant-worthy.
And I hope all the businesses downtown are listening too, because they'll get more customers if they make their places more accommodating for people with hearing loss.
Sure.
And the library, when they do the renovation, Lori told me that they will also be installing hearing loops, so this is, we would also serve as kind of a test case for, for, for them.
So, I'm supportive, this is great. Two questions. The first is, I think you said, Keith, this was coming from old capital? Can you give a little background on that? Like, where's the money coming from? Like, 11 grand or so?
We, we have, we have some old capital accounts that are with the IT department, that we, we can pull the, the balance of the 11,000 from.
Okay. And then, my second question was, going back to the conversation about the acoustics here, I think, Carol, you just said that those headphones could be used by anyone. I, you know, I don't think we have a discussion tonight, but maybe we buy a couple extra headphones and, for people in the back who can't.
$355.
How much?
$355 per device, but we'd be getting four.
That's way cheaper than 22 grand.
Right. But we, actually, we'd be getting four per room, so we would have 12, so we could just swap them out from different rooms.
Oh, okay, so you'd have 12, because, I mean, we do need, you know.
I'm sorry, 14, yeah, 14, 312.
Yeah, because we would, we would need to make those available to folks who have, I think, legitimate hearing problems first, right?
Got it right there.
But then, we could have extra, again, we can have this conversation another time, but I wouldn't mind exploring that as well, as part of the larger conversation around the acoustics in here, because that could potentially be another stopgap.
We already have one under ADA, I don't know how many we have, Dylan's holding them up, so if a person, so, if, but more in the disability category rather than enhanced, like, you know, that's how it works, it's, it's just, but how many do we have, Dylan?
Four.
Four. So, if, if we need to make a modification, because right now, if, if you are disabled and you can't hear us, then that's not great, and it's really unlawful, so we have those for up here, and they're available on request.
That's correct, okay.
I think you can see, Carol, that the council is as excited as you are. Thank you so much for this, and, and I think that you're the best example that hearing loss can happen at any age. I mean, you've had it for two years now, so.
Actually, four.
Forgive me. In any event, thank you so much.
Thank you, Carol, nice job. Mayor, that concludes my portion of the agenda.
Good, let's go right back to public comment. Anyone?
Good evening, Council. Chris Thompson, Ridgewood resident. Very interesting presentations tonight, it's very refreshing. I don't come all the time, but it's all the different topics.
It's good to have you, Chris.
Thank you very much. Something that kind of struck me, though, I heard you talking about federal grants, and with all the upheaval within federal government in terms of agencies, funding, et cetera, how do you, have you developed a, going forward, a federal grant strategy? I don't know, based on if federal grants are a part of budgets, but if they are, I think it would be very important for, for the council to develop a strategy going forward, especially with new tax bills coming in online, federal workers who have been, you know, laid off or retired. So, you know, when you apply for a grant, the efficiency of getting it might be lacking. So, just a recommendation. Also, I want to say, kudos to all of you. It's very good to see the balance of questions, some pro, some con, but that's very, very important for village government, so salute to everybody. And also, for citizens who always show up to hold people accountable, so, kudos, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Boyd, a loving Ridgewood resident. With respect to a comment that Mr. Mortimer made tonight about, I believe you said that there are 11 people who have been issued violations, summonses for sightline violations, but have not corrected the problem. That somewhat concerns me, that there are 11 summonses that have been issued, somebody gets a summons and doesn't do anything to correct the situation. And I'm just wondering, what's next with those sorts of things? Why does somebody get a summons and then decides that they're going to ignore fixing the problem, and what is the village gonna do about it moving forward? I know there's one corner that I pass by regularly, and I just can't imagine that the person has been summoned, but it's been that way for years, and nothing has been done about it. So, are we going to be taking any action against these people who absolutely refuse to, to do anything? And so, it just concerns me that, that we've got this kind of attitude out there, that, "Yeah, I got a summons, but I'm not gonna do anything about it." Thank you.
Thank you, Boyd. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'm gonna close public comment and open it up to the council for responses.
Through you, Mayor, I, I'll be very quick. Mr. Loving, the court has the discretion to issue a bench warrant. That is not a village council or manager decision, it's at the discretion of the municipal court. But if someone is unresponsive to a summons, has not adequately communicated with the court or appeared in municipal court, the, the court does have the right to issue a bench warrant for that unresponsiveness. Chris, on the federal grant issue, we have already fell victim to this. A number of weeks ago, we were notified at 5:30 on a Friday night that we were gonna lose some health department grant funding. Luckily, a federal judge put a stay on that. We're still working through guidance from the state as to how we're gonna deal with those positions. We have two full-time employees who are funded exclusively by two federal grants. I could tell you that most of the money that we have previously been allocated has previously been approved by Congress, so those funds are somewhat protected, because it's a congressional authorization. So, we're confident that the money that we've been previously awarded will most likely remain. We are thoroughly vetting all of the grant opportunities that we pursue on the federal side to make sure that they're sustainable moving forward.
And I just want to clarify, the, the hearing grant is a New Jersey grant, so we're very mindful, and we really hope that we still get federal money next year as well, we're hopeful.
And Boyd, I just want to emphasize, the village issues summonses. Once we issue some, a summons, it is out of our hands, it is in the hands of the courts. And, the court can decide to, as Keith said, issue bench warrants, fines, everything. Again, we have, we have gone to the limit of our authority at that point, so it's up to the court.
And I just want to quickly say that, that the summonses are rolling, so like, all 41 weren't issued together, and previously, that only letters were being sent, not summonses. So, we are seeing, like, every month, we get an update of how many new summonses were issued, and how many new people are now in compliance. So, I, I don't want to say that people are ignoring the summons, it just may not have, time elapsed to, to record it yet.
Anyone else?
Just one little bit about the, the ordinances that are the violations for these sight distances. There is an enhanced penalty for the time period that after either the issuance of summons has been, has been made, that if they let that sit until a court adjudication, the court has the ability to enhance the penalty, depending upon the egregious nature of the violation.
And, and by the way, the people who would be at the point where they may be issued a bench warrant, I would say they have had no fewer than between six and eight communications on the sightline obstructions on any of the corner properties. So, it has not been from a lack of the village communicating with these folks. They've received initial packets, which include photographs of the site obstruction, and backup information, including the ordinance with a diagram of how it would need to be abated. They've received follow-up warning letters, they've received visits from either the police department in some cases, and certainly the engineering department. And then, from there, it was summonses that were issued, there had been multiple violation notices as follow-up to those summonses issued by the municipal court. So, I would guess, again, between six and eight forms of communication with any of those property owners.
But I want to stress that it's only a handful of people who have ignored everything. The vast majority of people have complied, and so, it's really, like I said, a handful of people, and as Keith said, we have tried every way possible to get them to respond. They haven't, and so now, it's up to the municipal court judge to handle it. So, with that, shall we entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's go.